Call to order, the Dickinson City Commission meeting of Monday, January 4th. The records should show that all five commissioners are present. First agenda item is to look at the order of business. I understand we do have one addition. Mr. Kessel?
Yes, we do. I'd like to request that we add Agenda Item 4E and move down the reports to 4F, and that item would be a change to our fee schedule.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else have changes or additions? If not, look for motion to approve the order of business.
So.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign that motion carries. Look at the consent agenda. Do you want to discuss either of the two items on the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. With that, we will move to our regular agenda, and the first item, Item 4A, on our regular agenda has to do with a contract with KLJ, so I'm going to pass the gavel to Mr. Steiner as I will be abstaining from the discussion and the vote on that item. Okay, thank you. 4A is the city engineer contract with KLJ, and I believe City Minister here, Kessel, will do the introduction.
Thank you, Commissioner Steiner. As you see before you, we have had a contract with KLJ for the better part of two years. We have not found a city engineer as of yet, and we'd like to extend this contract an additional three months maximum. You'll notice that there is a 30-day period that allows us to end this contract, so if we do locate somebody and make an offer, we could get out of it early. You'll also notice that it differs from previous contracts because there's only one person that we'd be contracting instead of two. That one person would retain city engineer Kubas in the city's employ through KLJ for the next three months, but it does eliminate Mark Millstone's contract. The other thing that it does is it lowers the amount that we'll be paying for that individual, and I believe that that is a summation of the changes to the agreement that you have before you. City staff recommends approval. And that would conclude my report. Any questions?
Any questions from the commissioners?
I guess I have one, and it's, I know we needed the continuity with Mr. Kubas onboard, but when we went through the discussions before we're legal, we had put out a bid. Did we bid this out, or?
We did not bid this contract out. Commissioner Decker, we're not required to bid out professional services, so it is not a requirement that we have to require by any state law or local ordinance. And as you've stated, it's important to keep the kind of continuity that we've had, and especially for the short-term nature of this contract. I think it's in our best interest to maintain. To go through and bid would take several weeks, and technically, our contract ended with KLJ December 31st.
So at the end of this three months, are we going to put out a, if we don't have a engineer, are we going to put out maybe forbid then, or we don't have to?
Commissioner Decker, you're right, we don't have to. We certainly could. That would, in the past, we've generally not done that, but we certainly could. It is our desire and our hope to have somebody in-house by that time. We prefer not to contract.
Okay, thank you.
And nothing against KLJ when I say that.
Any other questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve or deny.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. There have been a motion by Commissioner Oatmans and a second by Mr. Decker.
I think it came from Mr. Frenzel.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Frenzel. We'll call for roll call vote. Commissioner Oatmans.
Aye.
Commissioner Frenzel.
Aye.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
President Jackson abstains. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. I'll turn back over to President Jackson.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Steiner. Next agenda item is our Employee Benefits Ordinance, second reading. Ms. Goss, can you introduce that for us?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 1603, which revises the personnel portion of the code regarding employee benefits. It adds holiday pay, which would be prorated based on the average weekly hours worked. This is only for regular part-time employees, which are those that work an average of more than 20 and less than 40 hours. This is the only pay that they do not have. They already have vacation and personal leave and things like that, so this is the only one that would allow them to have the same benefits as regular employees. City staff and civil service recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from commissioners for Ms. Goss? Okay, this is an ordinance, so we'll ask if there's anybody from the public who would like to comment on this Ordinance 1603, please come forward, state your name, and make any comments you might have. There are no comments, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion from commissioners.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from commissioners? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that motion carries. We have an appointment to the Civil Service Commission. Mr. Kessel.
Thank you, President Jackson. I do have a, we do have an opening on our Civil Service Commission, as I mentioned at our last meeting, that Ron Lisco is desired not to be reappointed. We certainly thank him for his service. He's been on the Civil Service Commission for a great deal of time and a very productive member. Ms. Lisa Geese has submitted her application or citizen interest form to be on this commission. We did vet Ms. Geese through the HR staff. We believe that she would bring a perspective that is not present on the Civil Service Commission and therefore better the Civil Service Commission. You can see her citizen interest form. She's a licensed social worker and has worked in that industry for quite some time in our area, in Dickinson or in western North Dakota for over 20 years. It is our recommendation that you point Lisa Geese to the Civil Service Commission.
Okay, so we need a motion to make that appointment.
So.
Grab a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on this appointment? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Mr. Kessel, we have one liquor license renewal.
Thank you, President Jackson. Yes, you're correct. We have one item. We have approved the rest of the liquor licenses prior to 2016. This remained a sole, not renewed. We couldn't act on it because we didn't have the application complete. As you may know, this applicant, Hawks Point, has been going through a bit of a reorganization process, and it took them some time to make sure that the application was complete and for us to do the background investigation. All of that is now complete, and we have found, it is our recommendation that they be awarded the liquor license at this time.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Kessel? Not, we need a motion for the Hawks Point.
Mr. President moves to approve renewal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. And then we have the added agenda item for the Rockwater water purchase. Mr. Kessel.
Thank you, Commissioner, excuse me, President Jackson. Yes, the item that I'm going to bring before you would require a motion to establish a new fee on our fee schedule. We just concluded a meeting as late as, less than a half an hour ago, with Rockwater and their representatives. As you know, we've endeavored to try and create a transfer station or fill station outside of the city limits of Dickinson and on the western side that would follow our pipe that currently produces or provides reuse water to the refinery. In anticipation of that completion, we've been approached by Rockwater, who would like us to provide that reuse water immediately. We do not have a station, fill station, in place. What instead they would like to do is overland pipe to their locations. They would provide water for four frac wells, or four wells that need to be completed or fracked. So what I'm asking that the commission do is establish a fee schedule for this, we'll entertain them via contract, but in order to do that, I need a fee schedule, and they're willing to buy every drop of water that we can produce, reuse water that we can produce that's outside of our contract with the Dakota Prairie Refinery. So our first commitment is to the refinery, that's a contract we have in place, so we'll honor that contract and sell everything else that we can produce to Rockwater. So because of those kind of quantities, we currently produce about 1.6 million gallons of water per day, and we assume that that production will stay in place for the length of this contract, which we're going to produce, which we will enter, will be about, the term will be, excuse me, three months. So what I'm asking is that you establish a fee schedule at $10,000. Our current fee schedule for this type of water would be 20,000, and the intent again is for trucks to come in and fill and then leave. Because this is a pipeline, there'll be no trucks, and their estimate of fracking four wells would remove between 4,000 and 5,000 trucks that will no longer, will not have to be filled and using corrode. So I think it's in our best interest to sell this water and at the quantities that they're expecting to use for the next three months at a rate of $10,000. The other thing that that does is it commits the Rockwater and their supplier to lay down 17 miles of overland pipe. They also have plans, Whiting has plans, to do additional wells along that path. So this could roll into a bigger contract than just this one, but we're asking today for just a three-month term of a fee schedule at $10,000 for reuse water for Rockwater Industry, or, excuse me, for the company of Rockwater. Does that make sense? I hope I've explained that well.
It does make sense, except for one thing. It's only a three-month contract, right?
Correct.
Okay. Except it's a close-ended, as far as what they're saying is they'll buy every drop. What happens if between the next three months, we have another user who wants to buy?
We can't sell it to them. If it's in that three-month period, we will not have, if this, if this contract is ink, Commissioner Steiner, we would not have any available water to sell. Between the DPR contract and this contract, we'd have to sell them fresh water, which we still have that capability to do. We just wouldn't have reuse water available.
Couple of questions. Our water depot, if you will, is not scheduled to be completed till this summer, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. If there are wells in addition to these four that they want to use our reuse water, will we be negotiating a new contract?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I know we look at our fee schedule once a year generally. We may or may not have the reuse water at the 20 or the 10 or something in between, I guess, the next time we look at that.
Commissioner Jackson, I'd like to entertain or answer that in the way that, to say that pricing in the industry today is very depressed because of the cost of, per barrel, that they can get for their product. And by signing a three-month contract, the hope is that oil prices will rise, therefore creating a little more room for the trickle-down effect to happen. I don't anticipate that any contract that Rockwater signs or any of their folks will change a whole lot until prices get beyond a certain price per barrel, 50, maybe even $60 per barrel. Then we'll see some ability to pay a higher cost for raw water product, like we offer a reuse water.
So I'm hearing you say that we may have a hard time selling this reuse water at $20?
Well, we're not selling it to anyone right now, so anything, yeah, anything that we're getting right now over the next three months is, you know, $10 better than.
That's right.
They inferred in our meeting that, yeah, it would be difficult for us to sell any kind of water at $20, whether it's potable or reuse. Now, we have sold quite a bit over the course of the last three years, but again, price was, the price of the end product was much, much higher than it is today.
Okay. And we simply need a motion?
You need a motion to establish a fee schedule item for this particular product at that price, yes.
I have a question. We're not, excuse me, we're not incurring any costs, pipeline costs, meter costs, they're going to pay for all of it.
We have, the pipe is in place, so any costs that we would incur are contractually obligated already. So we have a wheeling fee that we do have to pay to Dakota Prairie Refinery because they actually put that pipe in the ground.
Okay. And then there, you said we're producing 1.6 million wastewater, gray water?
Reuse water.
Daily?
Yes.
Okay, what is the refinery using?
They're using about 200,000 gallons a day.
So the, Rockwater's going to buy 1.4, 1.3 million gallons a day?
Yeah, they'll buy all the rest, as long as we're fulfilling the contractual obligation to DPR. DPR, our current obligation, I believe, is about 250,000 with an option to go to 500. We're going to contact DPR and see if they'll release the second half of that portion. I believe that they will, but we have to ask that question. So the contract, what our expected sales would be is everything except whatever we are contractually obligated to provide the refinery. And if that number's 250, great. If it's 500, then that's what the number will be.
At any rate, you're looking at almost a million-dollar contract over the next three months.
We're looking at selling a million gallons a day at $10,000.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
But there's not going to be any metering issues or anything?
They're, they would be in charge. We have to write the contract, they're responsible. Alls we give them is the discharge point, the flange, so to speak. They will provide the telemetry, they, because the State Water Commission has certain requirements that we provide to them, so we have to meet their requirements, but they'll provide all of that, they'll provide the meeting equipment, they'll provide the storage that they require, they'll provide the right-of-way or easements to lay the pipe. Alls we have to do is get it to that site, and it's there. That infrastructure is already there. So our costs are sunk in terms of this product.
So our pipes, and.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Any more questions or discussion? We'll look for motion then.
So.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. We'll move to reports. Mr. Kessel.
My report is for the Harvard Kennedy School Award. This is the bright idea. We did bring this to you several months ago when we were awarded this award. It's now official. They provided us the certificate. The award is, we were actually solicited by Harvard. I received a call several months ago asking us to put in a application for the award. I have no idea how they got my phone number, but they did. So we submitted our infrastructure prioritization policy, and they gave that the bright award, or bright idea award. And I really want to make sure that the team is recognized, that worked on that prioritization policy. Some of those team members aren't here, but they're really the ones who collaborated to establish that policy. It's driven our infrastructure projects over the last three years, and I think really put us in a good place in terms of serving the needs of our residents. So just wanted to make sure you're aware of that and the national recognition that Dickinson received for one of the processes we put in place to deal with oil growth. And then Ms. Goss has the other item for you this evening under Administrator Shin reports.
Okay, Ms. Goss.
Thank you. The other thing I have is a settlement agreement and release with Corey Branson. In 2012, the city obtained a drainage and utility easement in order to service Sundance Cove. Part of the easement agreement required reclamation of the disturbed area, including soil, grass, erosion control, and tree removal and replacement. Some of those were not done by the city's contractor, and Mr. Branson incurred some costs for those. So this agreement would pay those costs to Mr. Branson in return for him re-executing those easements, because we do not have the original signed easements in order to be recorded. We have copies of them, as well as releasing the city from any further obligations. So I just wanted to bring that before you and let you know that that settlement agreement and release has been agreed upon by Mr. Branson and will be coming to the commission at the next commission meeting for approval.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Goss? Anything else, Senator Reports?
Thank you. That would conclude our report.
Okay. We will move to public works. Looks like first item for Mr. Zurov is a task order with Apex Engineering.
Yes, thank you, President Jackson. First of all, one I have is Amendment Number One to Task Order Number 18 with Apex Engineering. The original task order, 18, was for the West Gravity Phase Three project, which is a gravity sewer project to convey flow from the north side of 21st Street West, then south to the future 29th, and to connect to the end of the West Gravity Phase Two project, which is on 15th and 30th. The exact location of this West Gravity Phase Three project has had many variations, and now with the purchase of the 20-acre parcel west of the school, plans are that we build 29th Avenue West, which is by the school, and 19th Street West, which is east and west towards 30th Street. And with that, we would include a water trunk line that would go from 21st Street to 15th Street. So in other words, we would add a water line to the sewer, West Gravity Phase Three sewer line project. And with the addition of the water line and the addition of that street, it was determined to split the project with two consultants. So the determination was to have the underground utility portion with one consultant and the street portion with another. This amendment with Apex is for the underground portion to include the water project or water portion with the sewer portion of that project. The additional services are not to exceed $107,000. City staff recommends approval, and I'm open to any questions.
Questions for Mr. Zurov? If there are no questions, we need a motion to approve the amendment.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Not, we will vote. Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, the motion carries.
The next item I have is the lift station number 14 bid. As you're aware, the lift station 14 is on the corner of 10th Avenue East and 21st Street. Bids for the lift station were received December 16th, and the low general construction bid was from BEK Consulting, LLC for the amount of $2,749,801. The low mechanical bid was from Central Mechanical for the amount of $81,100, and the low electrical was from Denny's Electric for the amount of $243,000. The total sum for all contracts was $3,073,901. The lowest combined bid was from Meyer Contracting for the amount of $3,76,500, and the engineer estimate was $3,376,319.69. The bids came in close. The combined bid of Myers was $2,599 higher, but because the three primes were the lowest, Apex Consulting recommend the awards, and so does city staff recommend awarding this project to BEK Consulting, Central Mechanical, and Denny's Electric, and contingent upon final approval by the North Dakota Department of Health.
As I recall, maybe you said it, Mr. Zurov, I think that the total of the bids was about 200,000 under the engineer's estimate?
Yes, engineer estimate was 3.3, and we came in at, yeah, pretty close, 200, 200,000.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Zurov? If not, the motion would be to approve the bid award to those three contractors.
Mr. President, I move we approve Lift Station Number 14 bid.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Go ahead, Mr. Zurov.
Thank you, President Jackson. The next item I have is the loader, landfill loader bid. We had quite a letter enclosed in our memo, but bids on this were received November 25th for the 4.25 front-end loader in a, with a landfill waste handling package. Three bids were received, and after review, the recommendations is to purchase the Butler 2016 Cat 950M for the total cost after trade of $246,939. Aaron Prowse is here with the Salt Waste Department, and I guess we can maybe go through how we came up with the recommendation to purchase that loader. It was not the low bid, so maybe at this time I'd ask Aaron to go through that for
Welcome, Mr. Prowse.
Good evening, President Jackson and commissioners. As Gary said, we recommend that we go with the purchase from Butler Caterpillar. It was our mid-range machine, which is about 46,000 over what was actually budgeted. Decision was made. We did go out to the city of Jamestown. We looked at a couple caseloaders they had on the field out there. They were one size smaller than what we were looking at. Lot of cosmetic damage. The loaders were underpowered. They were having some issues with moving around in the field. When it got into muddy or slippery situations, they did not have a fully locking loader. The rear end was, was an open rear end, the front end was the only thing that locked up on it. So as we were going through it, obviously, like Gary said, you guys have a whole list of all the things that did not meet spec on the loaders. The bucket breakout force was a little bit light, the final drives were full planetary. We asked for full floating planetary case offers outboard. The front and rear differentials, as I just talked about, we wanted automatic locking, especially for the application we're working in. The case did not offer that. The brakes shall be inboard mounted and sealed from water, mud, dust, and debris, which we work with every day. Case offers outboard brakes, which would be exposed to those elements. The loader did not have any platforms for like cleaning the windows and such, and when you're working muddy situations, the windows are always splattered full. And one of the biggest things that we noticed is their waste handle guarding package was a lot lighter built than what we're used to. So with most of that being said, so we don't have any more damages of what were already occurring on the equipment, we looked at going with the 950M. We also did add one of those into our fleet last year.
Long discussions with Aaron, we would probably not purchase a $10,000 light plant and a $30,000 lube body that we had budgeted this year to make up the difference, especially to try to keep budgets tight for the sixteen.
That was going to be my question, and I appreciate the fact that you guys did look at that. I think we need to be really looking at that.
Trying to be real conservative this year.
This year.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prowse.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I do have one. If they would have bid the 1021, what would have been their... He put in a ballpark number for me. He did look at it to see if it would even be comparable, and he said he was nowhere to even come close to that $246,000, that Butler bid. Okay. As a final. He said he was somewhere in the range of about $280 to $290 on that machine.
Okay. Other questions? Thanks, Mr. Prowse.
Thank you.
So, we need a motion to approve or not approve?
I would make that a motion to approve the purchase from Butler.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any more discussion? Not, we will vote. Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, the motion carries. Okay, it's five o'clock, and we have a five o'clock timetable agenda item for a special use permit. Mr. Josephson, you're going to introduce that for us.
Yes, thank you, President Jackson. President Jackson and Commissioners, Steve Josephson, city county planner. This is a request for a primary educational facility special use permit for Donovan Kayak of the Seventh Day Adventist Church, Seventh Day Church. The site is situated in Lot One, Block One of the Adventist Heights subdivision, and the property is approximately ten acres in area. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval subject to conditions. You have in front of you a revised site plan that we received from the applicant's representative this morning that shows how they're going to comply with specific conditions, referring to landscaping and placement of some other on-lot facilities and landscaping in the parking lot, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Josephson? This is resolution what, Ms. Goss?
One dash 2016.
Of course. That was a tough one. Any, I guess we're looking for a motion to approve the special use permit.
Both approve, Mr. President. I'll second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. We'll go back down to Item Eight-A, which is a rezoning petition, second reading. Mr. Josephson, you're going to bring us up to date there as well?
Yes, President Jackson and Commissioners, Steve Josephson, city county planner. This is a request for a rezoning petition from agriculture to planned unit development. The site is generally located in the northwest quarter of Section Twenty-Seven, Township One Thirty-Nine North and Range Ninety-Six West, and is approximately eighty-six point seven acres. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval. This will be the second reading of the proposed rezoning. No changes have been made since the first rezoning. Planning Director Hadley wanted me to mention to you that since the time of the public hearing, that city staff has worked with the applicant on an acceptable level of improvements and updated site plans to meet the intent of conditions of approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Josephson? This is resolution what, Ms. Goss?
One dash 2016.
Of course. That was a tough one. Any, I guess we're looking for a motion to approve the special use permit.
Both approve, Mr. President. I'll second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. And Mr. Josephson, the zoning text amendment.
President Jackson, city commissioners, this is a zoning text amendment to the city ordinance. It's an amendment, proposed amendment to Chapter Thirty-Nine zoning of the municipal code in the following articles. Thirty-nine point zero one, general provisions. Thirty-nine point zero two, definitions. Thirty-nine point zero three, use types. Thirty-nine point zero four, zoning district regulations. Thirty-nine point zero five, special and overlay districts. Thirty-nine point zero six, supplemental use regulations. Thirty-nine point zero seven, supplemental site development regulations, and thirty-nine point zero eight, landscaping and screening standards. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval. This is the first reading of the proposed amendments, and these were amendments that had gone before the planning commission and are coming to you for first reading. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of Mr. Josephson? The only thing I would add is much of this is housekeeping. Planning and zoning has been looking at these, discussing these for, I think in some cases, up to a year, on some of these, finally just putting it together, bringing it to the commission. Any comments or questions? If not, let's see, ordinance number must be sixteen hundred? No.
Sixteen oh four.
Sixteen oh four. This is first reading of an ordinance, so we will open this up to the public for comment. If anybody in the audience has any comments concerning these zoning amendments, please step forward. If not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion.
Both approve, Mr. President. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. With that, we'll look for any other items of business from city commissioners this evening? If there are none, we will look through the public. If there's anybody in the public that would like to bring any issues before the commission this evening, please step forward. There are none? We'll look for a motion to adjourn.
But, Mr. President, I do believe that these folks coming in now...
Okay, for those of you who weren't in the meeting room or at the portion of the agenda, we ask if there are any comments from the public. So, if any of you have comments to make tonight or questions, please step forward and state your name and...
Yeah, I'm Boyd Leibig with Canby Homes, and we have a question on the agenda about the letter that was sent out on the street lighting for Cook Meadows and Fourth Edition and all that.
Go ahead.
So, we've got some people here. Jim, you want to come up?
Thanks, Commissioners, and taking the time to listen. Thanks. Craig gave us a little bit of his time, too. Appreciate it. I guess I'm only specifically speaking for myself on here. I learned it this morning, and I realize there's a letter probably still reach our box, but if the issue is the safety of the lighting, I can completely understand that, and at least from my portion, I'm not at all opposed to street lighting at all. What I would like to do, at least in my portion of the development, we have a couple, I don't know, Craig, if you're completely familiar with what we've got there, but we have a pretty accessible place. What I'm used to doing is putting this in at about ten cents a square foot, and we're doing it in Fargo, the same thing. So, this isn't something that can't be done today. What I would like to do on ours is take ours out of the special assessment district, even if I got to put some money in escrow. I'll put in the lights. It's not going to be the fancy, fancy lights. It would be similar to what's in town and what's probably going in Boyd's development, and the people in our development won't have to pay for it. We'll put it in ours ourself, because seriously, I can do it for half the price of what your estimate is. And then the people who bought lots in our development don't have to pay for it.
Commissioners, just to bring you up to speed, this is, I don't know if it's all been said by the two gentlemen, on the lighting assessment district that was approved, I want to say it was the first meeting in December, it was the Cook Meadow Hills, first through fourth edition, and it also included Country Oaks Second Edition portions of it and Country Oaks Third, which is just a replat in the middle of the Country Oaks Second Edition. This is all in the area of the Prairie Rose Elementary School. I'm not exactly sure the property that Mr. Sullivan owns, but it's south and west of the school generally.
Yes.
Yeah.
Could you state your name just for the general public?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jim Sullivan. I'm with Sullivan Construction.
And when the district was approved, the cost, we put this together on a square-foot cost, as we had widely varying sizes of lots, some smaller, I'd say, normal-sized R1 lots, seven to ten to twelve thousand square-foot lots, and then much larger properties that house some R3 developments, where the lot was the entire block. And so, we went on a per-square-foot basis to prorate that cost to higher-density R3 property and lower-density R1 property. The lights that were most recently approved for this were a decorative-style light. I think it was in your packet at that meeting, a rendering of those lights, what I'd call a period-type light. There are other developments in town recently that have used a more standard light, and the lights they're referring to are the lights that we've put up along some of our corridor streets on State Avenue and Twenty-First Street. Again, these are estimates. What we've proposed in the twenty-six cents a square foot is just that, just an estimate. We haven't taken any bids on the project yet and actually haven't fully designed the project yet. We're at the stage right now where letters were sent out, the first notification went into the Dickinson press, I believe it was last Wednesday on the thirtieth. So, we have a month of protest period where everyone in the district has their right to protest their property out of this project. If those protests come in by square footage again at anything over fifty percent, this district would be rendered null and void. It would be a bar to the assessment district.
Okay. I would agree that, you know, that was an estimate, the twenty-six cents and so on. And in discussing, you know, that cost, it appears that, you know, there could be some improvement on that cost. You know, if they can get it done for ten cents and so on, I don't see any reason why that wouldn't come up during the bidding stage of it. But whether, you know, I don't know which direction we need to take now, because I think the people, you know, that this can be assessed to, you know, that might make a big difference to them. Do we bid it out first and then ask for an assessment approval? I mean, they might want to say, well, twenty-six cents, we can't afford it, and vote down. I mean, if it's more than fifty percent, it's a done issue. But however, some of them might be saying, you know, for ten to fifteen cents, I think it's something that they could live with. So, where do we go from here? I mean, you know, twenty-six is the days probably of, you know, before this boom hit the bus, you know? It's just like we did find out on one contract, we were on a $3 million contract that was $300,000 less than what the engineer's estimate was. That's ten percent right there. Now, I don't know if that's going to follow through, but I do think there's a concern in where do we go to further this long?
Let me say a couple things, and then maybe Ms. Goss or Mr. Kubis can jump in and correct me if I say it wrong. But first of all, I believe we've adopted a standard, a lighting standard now, correct? And from what I'm hearing, Mr. Sullivan is suggesting that he would put in some other light fixture, some other standard.
Similar to what, excuse me, other developments are.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we've adopted a new standard for...
Yeah, but that's for projects going forward. You can't go back on a project that's already been approved. These projects are already in and existing. Am I correct?
Yeah, but the lighting isn't.
They should have put them in at development stage or not put it all on the home.
That's right, it should have been.
It's $1.6 million.
To your point about price, Mr. Steiner, and the bidding process, that sequence is pretty well set out in state law, that we need to take these protests and then do the bid letting, and they may or may not come in at that twenty-six cents. Ms. Goss, can you correct me if I'm saying that wrong?
No, you're absolutely saying it correctly. After this protest period, the next step would be to approve the plans and specifications, and those plans and specifications include estimates and authorization for advertising for proposals on the improvement. So, that would be the point in time where if we wanted to use a different lifestyle or come up with a lower estimate, that would be what is done.
So, we could change the lifestyle at that time?
Correct.
And these specials, because they're residential, they're ten-year specials?
That's correct.
Okay. So, at the twenty-six cents and some of the average lots being $10,000, you're looking at $2,600, so $260 a year for some homes.
Now, I expect some of the other folks in here tonight have got...
Larger lots.
Different things to say than maybe these two gentlemen do. I suppose, Mr. Kubis, that if they did a project as part of their development that met our specifications, is that something we can consider?
Absolutely. I mean, we consider that on every development moving forward. My concern would be how it relates to the district that was approved by resolution last month.
I would assume that whatever lots they served with lighting wouldn't get an assessment. Or isn't it that simple?
Well, it could be. I'm assuming your lots are confined, you know, maybe not, but to a block, and we would typically light one side of a block, your side of the block, providing light for another block on the other side of the street. So, it might be that your investment, and this isn't all bad, but your investment...
Okay. So at the 26 cents and some of the average lots being 10,000, you're looking at $2,600, so $260 a year for some homes.
Now, I expect some of the other folks in here tonight have got...
Larger lots.
Different things to say than maybe these two gentlemen do. I suppose, Mr. Kubis, that if they did a project as part of their development that met our specifications, is that something we can consider?
Absolutely. I mean, we consider that on every development moving forward. My concern would be how it relates to the district that was approved by resolution last month.
I would assume that whatever lots they served with lighting wouldn't get an assessment. Or isn't it that simple?
Well, it could be. I'm assuming your lots are confined, you know, maybe not, but to a block. And we would typically light one side of a block, your side of the block, providing light for another block on the other side of the street. So it might be that your investment, and this isn't all bad, but your investment would take more homes, more lots out of an assessment district than just the lots that you own. If you owned one side of the street...
No, I realize we would be covering lots that we don't own because we'd have to cover both sides of the street.
That's not necessarily a bad thing, but it would have to be looked at of what exactly would be served.
And that's probably something that needs more discussion, needs a little more study before we can really give you an answer. But if we could, I'm expecting there's probably some other folks that want to speak here tonight. I don't think we're going to give you an answer tonight.
Yeah. Thanks for your time.
It's good to hear your concerns.
Mr. Jackson, can I ask Mr. Sullivan a question?
Sure.
Mr. Sullivan, it sounds like you can do this rather competitively. Are you planning to bid the whole project?
No. No, we don't do that at all. We just, we primarily just do our own, our own stuff.
Are there any deviations other than the ones you mentioned today that you would propose from our specs?
Yes, just what I mentioned to Craig. It would be a similar type lighting that was approved in Boyd's...
And what's up here at State's and in other areas in town.
In other areas in town.
So it's just the pole and the arms that you're proposing be different? Every other aspect would be met?
I didn't go into great detail because we just met with Craig for probably 15 minutes, but I'm sure we're exact to the specs. And that's what the question I had a little bit with Craig is, I realize, you know, a recommendation comes from somewhere, but did the management team, go outside of the management team to seek input from, for this?
We certainly can. We've asked for citizen involvement in some of our committees, just what he's talking about.
Right. The only reason I'm asking is Boyd said he wasn't aware of it and I wasn't aware of it till this morning.
I want to make sure I understand your question. Are you asking if we had input on establishing the standard or establishing the district?
Standard, the standard of the lights.
What we had discussed with Craig is how did the standard raise to such a bar within the city?
Okay, gotcha.
Instead of a $5,000 pole, how'd you go to a 10,000? What was the discussion?
Gotcha, okay.
Not that it's bad, that's what...
And to answer the question, that was an internal discussion. You know, our standard for many, many years, decades probably, was whatever our utility companies had put up, which by and large was a wooden pole that the city leased from the utility companies. More recently, we've put up metal poles on some of our corridor streets, the State Avenues and the 21st Streets that you referenced. At one time, just as recently as, you know, middle of last year, we talked about using a concrete pole as the standard for a residential street. We hadn't adopted that officially, and as we moved into this project, then we talked about the decorative light, I would call it, similar to some of those lights that you see in the state addition south of the Sanford Clinic. It's kind of a hanging light. So that's kind of the evolution of the standard, but it's been an internal discussion with team members throughout, I would say, the years, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe before we get more comments, maybe it'd be good to back up and have you explain the reason for the project, what the project consists of. You might answer some questions before people start.
Sure. Again, the project is in North Dickinson, Cook Meadow Hills, first through fourth edition, and portions of the Country Oaks second edition, which now includes a Country Oaks third edition. But it's all the original Country Oaks second edition or pieces of it. This was in a transitionary period in Dickinson, I'd say 2000, maybe late '11, '12, '13, where prior to this, the standard was the utility company just put up streetlights as new developments happened. Either MDU or Rough Rider, we essentially got the same pole, a wooden pole with the Cobra headlight. And as, I think, as the pace of growth picked up, the utility company said, you know, we'd rather just be utility providers and not install these lights anymore. So this was something that the city really touched at arm's length. We took those poles over after they were installed and paid them on a lease basis. These developments went in and probably weren't getting the scrutiny at the time, but they went in similar to prior developments. The lights didn't get installed by the utility companies. There's nothing requiring those utility companies to put in streetlights. That's just, was practice in the past. So we came back. We didn't have an agreement with the developers to install the lights in these two developments. So the discussion started probably late in '14, maybe even early in '14, of how are we going to get lights here? State law and city code allows for lighting districts similar to this to be created for the installation of streetlights. One of the questions that we get a lot, and understandably so, is that everyone who has a water meter in town and gets a utility bill every month, gets a $3 for residential utility bill. They get a $3.50 a month charge for streetlights. It's probably a slightly misnamed utility charge because while it does pay for the electricity or the lease of those streetlights around town, it also pays for all of our, or subsidizes anyway, all of the electric bills that the city receives. It also pays for the electricity and maintenance on the street signals that we have, the traffic signals at our busy intersections. So everyone's paying a portion of all the electric costs across the city, not necessarily for that pole in front of your house, but understandable that when you don't have that streetlight in front of your house, what am I paying this bill for? So we've gotten a lot of comments on that, and we've tried to get back to those folks that have commented on the $3.50 utility fee for lighting. But then as we moved into it, we said, really, our only method to pay for this project, again, the $3.50 is covering operation and maintenance of lighting. We've never paid for streetlights themselves except for, again, along the major corridors. So our option was really limited to a special improvement district for lighting. And that's what we moved forward with this. We evolved to the pole that we have today, the decorative pole. The district was created and approved in December, and now we're in that protest period.
Okay, you've explained the transition with the utility companies not doing the lighting anymore. Can you explain what a new development would be? If there were a new subdivision, a new Meadow Hills, what is our policy and what would happen?
Well, there is a new Meadow Hills right now. It's Cook Meadow Hills, Fifth, across the street, the, across State Avenue to the west, excuse me, where in our development agreements for that development and developments moving forward, in that agreement, the developer shall install those lighting costs and take, or install those lights and however they defray those costs, assuming they put that on the cost of the lot that they sell off or the homes they sell. So west of State Avenue in the development that's just starting to be developed now, the lights are installed and operational to a point. I think we've actually made a few of those lights operational right now because of the, there's only a couple of homes being built there right now. So moving forward, the intent right now is to not go through this process that the cost of the lighting would be built into the subdivision cost for the developer.
Okay. And then the last question I have for you, Bismarck has a process, I think. Are you aware of that? And can you tell me what Bismarck does?
I am aware of it. I don't want to be quoted on it. I don't know the exact percentages, but the City of Bismarck does do special assessment districts for lighting similar to this. It's never required of the developer. They come in and when a development roughly hits 50%, again, please don't quote me on that, when it hits 50% developed or 50% building permits, I'm not sure what the exact trigger is, they'll initiate a special improvement project for lighting, again, going through the same process that we all have to follow in North Dakota where that subdivision or that neighborhood has the ability to protest it out. And my understanding is there are a couple subdivisions in Bismarck. For whatever reason, they've protested that out and remain unlit today. So it's not uncommon or unheard of that this is how subdivisions are lit, to go through a special improvement project. It's somewhat unique to Dickinson just because we've always had historically the utility companies put those lights up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kubis. Now, with that as a background, anybody else have questions or comments they'd like to make?
Hi, my name's Brad Knapp, 1103 Wall Street. Thanks for listening to me. I have a rather large lot compared to some of the lots. I'd like to understand how you came about assessing people based on square feet and not front feet of curb? Seems to make more sense you aren't lighting my backyard, for the record.
Yes, we did discuss this with our special assessment commission. Again, due to the varying size of the lots, we felt that a square footage basis was as fair as anything. Never perfect, trust me, I've done enough of them to know I'm never going to get these perfect. But with the R3 lots, same argument could be made there, that they're paying on a square footage basis more than their fair share. So front footage might make, you know, less of a cost to your lot. I don't know which lot exactly your address sits on, but it also makes someone else's lot more.
I understand that, but you're only lighting the front of the lot, right? Or the side of the lot? So it seems to make more sense doing it by foot of curb, right? Or am I wrong?
Well...
What benefit do I gain from, I mean, you're only lighting the front of my house. I'm paying double whatever other people are paying.
Well, you may be, I don't know. Again, you know, on a cul-de-sac, you could make the argument that you might only have a very small front footage.
I think Boyd has what I'm paying. Is it like 4,000?
I mean, does one light even cost that?
Unfortunately, yes, it does, but...
Maybe not from Jim, though?
Maybe not from Jim.
Okay.
Boyd, were you saying that they installed other lights recently, half the cost?
In the one, in the Meadow Hills?
You're going to have to come up here, Boyd. If you're going to have conversation there, you're going to have to come up here so the public can hear it.
Oh, okay.
I'm just stating what we install them for on our new subdivisions. But again, we don't put this type of light up that they're putting, and either did Cook on his new subdivision didn't do these type of lights. So if we put a new standard in place, then why it might help put the new standard lights on a brand-new subdivision.
Because we just approved it in December, the new lighting standard. My question would...
These plats have been in for four years.
I understand that. My question would be, since their situation, could we allow for them to put in, say, the standard over at Cook Fifth or whatever is in State's? Allow that for theirs, since they're already in play? And then go forward from this with the decorative lighting or possibly even change that?
I think Ms. Goss addressed that, and that that's a possibility. It's, the district is really what's, what's being proposed right now and is able to be protested out. The specifics of the project, I mean, in general, we will provide lighting with the project. The specifics of it, I think, could be adjusted.
Yes, that would be the next thing that comes to the commission, assuming that this isn't protested to the point of barring the district. The next would be approving the plans and specifications, so those specifications could include a different light standard.
Is there public input at that point? Let's say that the zone goes through, because we know you need lighting in that area. There's no question about that. Then how do we proceed?
What's the question?
So then, is there public input at that point when we...
At the bid opening point?
Yeah, right.
There is no required or formal...
Right.
...public input. We certainly can take public input. You know, I don't want to confuse the discussion tonight, but maybe Ms. Goss, you want to explain what the assessment commission is and the fact that these are only estimates right now and the rest of the process? In other words, there is more protest at a later point?
Yes, that's correct. So this is just to bar doing the project completely. The next step after this, assuming it's not barred, is to approve plans and specifications, so there will actually be detailed estimates and plans with the exact light and things going in at that time, which will need to be approved by the commission. So at that time, if the commission chooses to go with the light that's in Cook Fifth or some of the other ones that absolutely can be done at that time, once those plans and specifications are approved, we do open the bids, enter into contracts, and actually have the work done, then it actually goes to the special assessment commission where they will then have the total cost of the improvements and will determine the exact amount that will be assessed against each lot. So at that time, they could change whether it's done by front square footage or the entire square footage of the lot. Those changes will be made by the special assessment commission once the final total.
And that assessment...
What year would they be looking at doing assessments? Seventeen or eighteen? Or do you even know? Are the lights going to go in first and then the assessment's going in? How does that all work?
If timing worked out as quickly as possible, I don't know if it's the best-case scenario, but the soonest they could go on the tax rolls would be the taxes that are due in 2017. They'd have to be installed, we'd have final costs on the project, actual, you know, bills paid out to the contractor. And then we have those meetings that Ms. Goss was referring to, again, with the special assessment commission, ratify that through city commission, and then it goes, at the end of October, I believe is the date, to the county to go on the tax rolls for the next year. So at the soonest, it would be 2017.
If we don't like any of the bids at that time, we can throw them out.
Absolutely.
Come up and say, you want a wooden pole?
Well, that's acceptable. Maybe you want a wooden pole in your new development. I would guess you probably wouldn't, but I've one across from my street I'd rather was out of there, too. But the point being is that, I mean, it's not a done deal as far as the cost at this point. You know, hopefully, we will get some bids in at 10, 15 cents.
I want to make sure everybody understands, though, that at the time, the assessment commission spreads the precise assessments, then there is another opportunity for everybody to protest each individual assessment. Did I say anything wrong there, Ms. Goss?
No, that's correct. So at this time, all we're doing is moving forward that we will install lighting. So that's the protest right now, is whether we want to have this special assessment done to install lighting in this area.
One question I have, I don't know if this is the right forum, but I currently pay special assessments. And two years ago, when I moved in, I was told, don't have it in writing, but that it covered streetlights and the front curbing. Is that not the case, or is that something you could double-check?
It was not the case. I'm not, I don't know who told you that, but that was for a portion of water sewer and streets. And streets, but only a portion of the water sewer and streets. More comments or questions?
Just one other comment. To your point about utility, so I'm paying for the utility to light lights around the city, right? And other people get the benefit of that, but I have to install my own light? I don't, I guess I don't understand why that utility wouldn't pay for the installation. Like, it's not fair because those people didn't have to pay for their light installation. Why do I have to pay?
Well, somehow or another, I think the old saying, you don't get anything for free, holds true here. And everyone's had to pay for their lights. Maybe it was a sunken cost installed by the utility company. But you're right, though, the light utility fee, the $3.50 a month, pays for electricity and the lease for all the poles all around town. But you're right, though, the light utility fee, the $3.50 a month, pays for electricity and the lease for all the poles all around town. And this would be the first district that I'm aware of, where the lighting would be broke out and paid directly by the property owners. Now we're moving towards the, you know, the method of having the developer pay for those costs upfront, and, you know, have it be a cost into the cost of the lot or the cost of the home. If we could go back to 2010, we wouldn't do it this way. But we can't. So this is our method as a city to get these lights installed.
The $3.50 per homeowner or property, et cetera, does not cover all the expenses that the city incurred for its lighting projects and so on. We were talking about this earlier. I think at the $3.50, it raised maybe $300 and some thousand dollars, but our budget is $400 and some thousand dollars. So you could say that when you were driving through the other streets in town, that we were, other people were subsidizing the cost for you to drive in the streets also. You know, it's a tough deal. But bottom line is, you want to get lights in your subdivision, and this is one way to do it. And, you know, I think the only argument we have here is the cost, and I think we're addressing the cost. But to say that you aren't going to pay the $3.50 a month, I don't think that's gonna happen.
What the city, or what a lot of homeowners are talking about, is if the city missed this and didn't have the developer put the lights, then why are they covering 100% of the cost? Were you guys' mistake? It's basically where they're coming out.
Was it our mistake, or was it, you know, misinformation, because the utility company had historically always done that? And so there were two things that converged at the same time.
Basically, not catching that.
But all these new developments are paying for 100% of their lighting costs. This one is gonna have to happen by special assessment. The others happen with the lot price. And you would know how that works.
So you penalize the small people? I mean, you guys have deeper pockets than I do. Why should I have to pay for your mistake?
No, if it were happening the way it's happening now, you would have paid for it in the cost of your house, your home, your lot.
So is it gonna add value to my house? Is it something that I can finance through my mortgage?
You can't finance it through your mortgage, no. But I would think that streetlights would add value to the neighborhood.
Maybe this is a time that Fire Chief Seavock or Police Chief Dossinger could make some comments related to that particular comment.
Yeah, that could be a good time. Just a quick Google search shows varying statistics on whether it reduces crime. The benefit outweighs the disadvantage of the price. Lots of studies, so I'm not saying I don't want them, but...
I want to give other people a chance to talk, too. You got something else, go ahead.
No, I think we're done. Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
President Jackson, commissioners, I can't quote any studies or provide any statistics concerning emergency response. But as an emergency responder, and as someone that's tasked with providing emergency response to the city of Dickinson, the Dickinson Fire Department's stance on something like this is that a lit subdivision is much better for our response, whether it's police, and I'll let Chief Dossinger expound on that, or fire, or EMS. The dark subdivision, unless somebody has got the presence of mind in an emergency situation to turn on their outside light, lighting up that house, is a very difficult response for us. It's an unfortunate situation that's happened with all of the variables that have led us to this with the subdivisions that do not have street lighting. But they're detrimental to our response, absolutely detrimental to our response. Contrary to the opinion that I sometimes give, or the impression that I sometimes give, that the adopted city fire code has something to say about everything, unfortunately, streetlights aren't under the realm of the fire code. But for an emergency response capability for the city of Dickinson, it's something that we need to see have installed, absolutely.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. These are very nice subdivisions that we're talking about here tonight. And as these subdivisions started filling in with homes and residents, it was quickly brought up by my staff to me that these neighborhoods are pitch black at night. Oftentimes making it difficult to find house numbers, and oftentimes in our police response, we don't want to light up the neighborhood prior to arriving on scene. So our staff has definitely noticed that these neighborhoods are dark.
Thank you, gentlemen. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Hello, my name is Lucas Vogelsang. I also live on Wall Street, 1232. It's Koch First Edition, Block 1, Lot 2. A couple of things that you're saying, the new development that's going in on the other side of states, obviously, you said, was set before the standard was put in effect. So why should we have, on the other side of the school, not current, I guess, on which streetlights is over there, could be wood poles. The other side of states is the stand, not the current standard, but what was approved by you guys. But in the middle, we're gonna have a third different kind of light. I don't understand why we shouldn't make everything the same. Why do we have to go with the more expensive light? Again, I'm not opposed to having lights. I have kids, just like pretty much everybody here that lives in the neighborhood. Another thing is, is the new elementary school went in in 2011, I believe, was built in 2011. And the new development in Koch started in also 2011. Obviously, as a city, and the school boards and everybody, already knew there was gonna be multiple young children in the area. Why wasn't it thought of then, saying, "Oh, we're probably gonna need some lights up here," not just, "Oh, I guess we missed that."
I guess I can answer maybe that. I was here at the time, right before Craig showed up. I guess, there at the time, too, it was, the utility companies provided the lights. You would build a subdivision, MDU, and referee would come in and put up the lights. So it was not an issue that the city looked at, is, you know, as far as remembering to get the lights put up. That was done by the utility company.
So you built the new house, I forgot to put lights on it?
No, like I said, the utility companies did that prior. And at that time, it was all a change, and at that time, is when utilities companies, I think, stepped back and said they're not gonna install the lights. That was happening the same time that these subdivisions were being built.
Okay, another thing I want to touch on, too, is obviously, everything's gonna have to be board now, because streets are already put in, sidewalks are already put in. What about the property damage when these go in? Are you gonna come back and fix my grass when it goes in, fix my sprinkler system that I put in, all that?
That will be the cost of installing the lights in the city right of way.
So I could take a picture of it? Other than the pole being there, it's gonna be identically the same?
I don't know if it'll be-
You said it was gonna be covered, did you not?
Mr. Vogelsang, the reclamation of the property will absolutely be included in the cost of the project. And will it be more expensive, you know, working through developed property versus undeveloped property? I imagine it would if I had to make those reclamations, yes.
I understand that the property pins, technically, the city owns that boulevard and the sidewalks, if I'm correct, if I correct, property pins on the inside. The city also, you know, if I let the grass grow three feet tall, I'm gonna get a fine for it, because you're gonna come and mow it.
You're also correct.
So if I'm wrong, our also development has had a lot of road issues. They've come in, refixed roads already in the same development.
That's right.
I don't know about what everybody else's specials are when we bought. I know some of the lots didn't have them. I pay, I believe it's $16,000 for my specials on my lot. I also have a larger lot. So the roads are, obviously, had issues. I haven't seen any additional cost to that, which is fine. But what happens in three years, there's multiple patches through the roads, whether it's 12th Street, corner of Stephanie and Wall, and they're still heaved up. I mean, that's, eventually, it's gonna come back to a cost again on us, because it's a special, and it's gonna be the same thing in a few years. And you guys say, "Well, we're gonna need a new board for this," and it's gonna be another special assessment on top of it.
That's not how our street maintenance works.
That's not how it works.
We live on 14th Street, and they just came in last summer and tore up and redid the whole thing from 10th Avenue East. They're down to the other end, and not a single property got assessed a special on that. It's part of our ongoing street maintenance.
Most of the street maintenance is done with the 5% of the 1% sales tax. We have had to go into that subdivision, spend a lot of money, that more than any other subdivision has received recently for street repair, because of the way that subdivision was put together. But, you know, the plan isn't to, oh, yeah, in a year, we're gonna specialty you, and the next year, we're gonna specialty you. That's not, you know, that's not what we do. We try to get your streets maintained, which is done by the sales tax, and hopefully, that will suffice for the dollars to keep the streets maintained at a good level. Snow removal, electric, you know, everything else. So, yeah, there could possibly be a specials. Your neighbors could come together and say, "We want a special," and bring it to the board. And so the public can bring it forward also. So it's not just the city government that can, you know, ask or request a special to be put before the board.
The letter that you guys sent out, your last meeting, I believe, was on the 7th, when we got the petition letter that everybody was sent out. It said 30 days to petition, right? That meeting was held on the 7th, I believe, of December?
30 days from the date it's filed in the city newspaper, is that correct? We- We have to publish it in the papers, 30 days from that published date in the paper.
So the meeting, I think, said it was gonna be held on, I could be wrong, the 19th? I don't know if that's right or not.
What would be the 19th?
What's that, January the 19th?
And what would that-
Before the petition?
The 30 days, I think, is probably the end of January sometimes.
Well, that's where I was going, because my, the letter I physically got in the mail was dated the 23rd. If you look on the back of it, your guys' meeting was the 7th. So was the meeting from the 7th? You know, that's where I was going at, just to find out where that was at with that.
Yeah, the 30 days starts with the publication of the paper.
Do we know what day that was, just offhand?
I don't have it offhand.
All right, that's all the questions.
It was just the last few days.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Brian O'Toole on Post Street. How many lights per street or per foot are you guys wanting to put in?
Do we know that yet?
I don't have an exact footage. I do know the estimate that this price contains is 137 lights for the entire district of Cook Meadows, 1 through 4, and that portion of Country Oak Second, so it's-
Well, how do they get a price off of that if you don't know how many, you know?
It's a-
Is it gonna be two per street, or?
137 lights. I don't know what the distance is, or how many per block, but the total is 137 lights.
So they're not gonna come out and put it like right in front, or right next to our yards, or somewhere where we're gonna do something, or add onto the garage, or?
They're gonna put them in front of somebody's yard. But that's exact spacing hasn't been set.
Will that ever be able to be discussed on where they'll be located? Or you guys just determine that by what you guys, it's necessary?
Well, typically, we try and get, you know, an equal distance spacing between the lights, and, you know, and most of these streets are fairly straight. Some of them are somewhat curved. But we put them on property lines, as best we can, so it's not, you know, right in front of your living room, or obviously, in the driveway, so they'll be on property lines.
All right, that's good. And then, what about, we pay state taxes? Does that, that won't cover any of it? We pay all year. I think I pay $14,000 a year in the state taxes.
State taxes? No, I don't believe state taxes would pay for any of this.
And we pay for snow removal, but I've yet to see a snow blade come through. So we're being charged for everything, but no services are being provided. And I, we get the, we all got the letter, it has to be four inches or above to have snow removal. But how can you leave the streets with three inches of snow, but fine us for keeping our sidewalks? It goes back to the same deal. We're paying for everything, but nothing is coming from our tax dollars.
Well, you're paying for snow removal in a very, very heavy-
I, you know, the snow removal has nothing to do with it. I'm just going back to tax dollars. Why is 100% of it on us, which I understand this one is for just to banish it or continue with it?
Who else would it be on?
Why can't the city of Dickinson cover some of it?
You still end up paying that, any dollar that Ben comes-
Yeah, yeah, but why, you guys, there's, the city of Dickinson has a bank account that we've already put into. So why can't some of that money that we've already paid in cover some of it?
The city does not keep huge reserves. The city pays as it goes. And the only place the city gets fund is from the taxpayers.
Yeah, everyone. But the fact, okay, so we pay $3.50 a month for everybody else on our street, or for streetlights. Why can't all of this be spread out through the city, if we're paying for them $3.50? Or not even have them cover a portion of it the rest of the city?
The $3.50 is largely an operation and maintenance cost, an installation cost.
Well, that's, why can't we put the installation cost throughout the city?
Well, I suppose we could.
And not even all of it, still give us part of the bill, but, or distribute some of it to them, to the rest of everybody else.
But then your $3.50, of course, would be a very large number.
Which is fine. Say it's five bucks, that'll still, or 10 bucks. That's still better than, I think, mine's four grand payment right now.
This is a common way of doing streetlights.
The common way is to have, like you said, the utility company putting in, but they didn't.
Different cities do it different ways. We just explained to you that Bismarck does all of theirs with special assessments.
So we just didn't have a procedure?
Would there be a process that we could propose doing it that way? You know, raise everybody's utility, so that it could pay for everybody's lights going forward? And let the people vote on that, instead of, instead of the board members deciding the fate of us few?
You know, some of the streetlights you're talking about are 50 years old, have been paid for for a long time by the folks in those areas. That $3.50, again, is-
Or you mean, for the record, paid by the utility companies, correct?
What are you asking me?
You said, "The people paid for their lights," but earlier, several of you said the utility companies paid for the lights.
And the people paid for them at their utility bill.
And then we leave-
Just like we pay, but you aren't paying for our lights. I'm confused.
The bottom line is that the $3.50 you have to look at is an operation and maintenance.
Yeah. We understand that part. We're just understanding why we're paying for maintenance on their street, and they can't pay for something on our street.
And it will, moving forward, when your lights are installed, that money will be used to keep the maintenance and repair in the lights changed, and the lights that go into your subdivision, too.
Once you guys come up with a plan to move forward, is there a way that we can come back and then foresee your plan, and then eject the idea, or is this the only time to be able to eject it?
So you want us to levy more on our property tax to pay for the lighting where you live?
If it's only five bucks or so, or spread it out through a town.
No, but it's not only $5, $5 per lot, et cetera. But I think we might have not a large enough commission room for everybody else that comes in the next meeting, if they're gonna be asked to pay for your lighting. You gotta understand that-
Go ahead.
A lot of these areas have wooden posts in their yard. Okay. They'd probably be pretty happy to pay for $3.50 a month to have newer poles, more attractive poles, et cetera. Now, I don't think it's gonna change what you're asking for here. I-
I just want to know, say, we come back, say, you guys move forward here, and you can, the cheapest guys you guys can find is 18 cents per foot. You know, and then you just move on, move on. So there's, there's no way we can change it after this meeting? Because we don't even know what we're going into here.
They have the power to protest.
The only estimate you guys have got is lights.
If you protest this, you don't have to have lights. You don't have to have them.
Which I'm fine with having lights. I just don't want-
And then you could set up a special district if the gentleman back there wants to put them up. They could set up a special district just for them, if everybody protests out of this.
Okay, well, will we be able to come back again here after you guys come up with a game plan?
Yeah.
Several more times.
The game plan is there. The game plan is there.
With actual costs.
The bid is not.
Yeah.
You heard, heard Goss explain this.
The only thing you have to decide today collectively is if you want lights or not. And, and by protesting now, what you're saying is that you do not want streetlights in your subdivision. That is really the only question that we are, that, that the letter that got sent out to you, the only thing you'd be protesting by saying no, is confirming that you do not want streetlights in your subdivision. And so if everyone agrees that they want streetlights, there's gonna be several more meetings that will discuss what the options are, what the costs are, what types of lights are gonna be used. So the letter that you received is only determined if you guys want streetlights in your subdivision. And if enough of you protest it because of, you think that the cost is concrete right now, you won't have streetlights in your subdivision.
Okay, well, I'll move forward to saying, "I'll, I'll take lights," and then we'll come back then.
Yep, and then you'll have an opportunity to come back several more times to fine tune.
All right, thank you.
So when this one goes through, we say, "Okay, yes, we want lights."
That's all you're saying?
I'm not done. When we say, "Okay, we're gonna take the lights," but now, we were talking about changing the light styles. What if, as the development in whole says, well, and you guys say the lowest bid is 18 cents a foot, as Brian touched on? What if as the whole development comes together and says, "You know what, we don't like 18 cents a foot, we wanna go cheaper." Then what happens? 'Cause we already said, "Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna take them regardless, 'cause this is gonna go through."
That's why we give you the estimate now, and, you know, the estimate now is 26 cents. So you have nothing better to base your.
But that's, that's based on an average of, according to the budget of a $10,000 pole.
That's right.
That nobody else in the entire city, not even the hospital or any of the new schools have, correct?
I'm sorry?
The, the hospital doesn't have these new fancy poles, these concrete poles that you guys are talking about? Hospital's pretty new, as far as I'm concerned. What about the new middle school that we just approved, is this gonna have these fancy poles? Or is it gonna be, because we didn't have that, that's already pushed through, we don't have that like the other subdivision on the other side of states?
You do understand that the hospital paid for all their streetlights, and that the middle school, streetlights we paid by the school district.
But where did the money get to the school district? 'Cause if I remember correctly, as a city, we approved a $65 million bond.
That's correct.
So again, we're still paying for those lights.
$79 dollar bond.
Is it gonna, is it gonna be the big fancy concrete lights?
If you wanna protest the school district's lights.
No, I'm not.
By all means, show up to their meeting.
I'm just, what I'm asking is, are they gonna have the big fancy lights, or are they gonna have the, the same lights that you guys put in on states?
Mr. Vogelsang, we're not responsible for people's private property or properties.
It's Vogelsang.
Done on the middle school. Anything that they do in their parking lots or such, that's their responsibility. And we don't have control over those things.
So we don't have, you guys don't get to say what the school puts in for lights?
Correct.
No. I believe that the paper that Boyd has, that shows what the assessment would be at 26 cents a foot, shows that the, that the Prairie Rose Elementary would be $113,000 at 26 cents a foot. But now you're saying that the school doesn't get to decide?
On the boulevard, we get to decide. On their parking lots, we don't. There's a difference between the two.
Okay. That's all I got.
Mr. President, I do have one more point of clarification. Mr. Kubus, on, on the protest, 50% or more would have to approve it or decline it. That's not based on, on property, but on, the 50% would have to be the square footage combined, correct? We have.
Correct.
$1 million square footage.
Yeah.
So the gentleman that talked about having a bigger lot, if he says no, his vote, because he has a larger lot, would carry more than the person with 10,000 square feet.
It would. There, there are multiple ways to assess benefit, but to protest a district out there's, there's one way that I'm aware of, and it's by square footage. So yes, the, if someone owned 50.1% of all this property, they could single-handedly protest it out or ensure that it would go through. Correct.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address the commission?
Good evening, commission. First off, once we received the letter, I was able to go on and.
I'm sorry, could you just give us your name?
Yes, sir, my name is Jennifer Smith. I live on Country Oak Drive.
Okay.
First off, I wanna commend Ms. Binstock and Ms. Goss, as this letter came out. Went on a little fact-finding mission to understand the history of special assessments. The history of our subdivisions in particular, and why we're being singled out is, is to pay this special assessment. So I certainly appreciate their flexibility and their support as I learned, you know, kind of the history of this whole thing. Certainly this evening I came is in a fact-finding mission. I'm not opposed to streetlights by any stretch. I don't think that anybody, any homeowner in the residency, or in the subdivision would be opposed to streetlights. But as a taxpayer and a homeowner, I do wanna understand the value that this creates, and understand the value of this particular lighting proposal. Given that, I understand that those facts are not in line, and I can't, I can't assess that value this evening. And it sounds like it'll be a long time before I can assess that value as a homeowner in the subdivision. Certainly, before I let my letter of protest, I wanna understand what I'm protesting, which I think the council has done a very good job of explaining, and I appreciate that. But I do have a couple of questions based on the discussions this evening that I just wanna understand a little better. First, I don't have the luxury of having a builder to support me anymore. Certainly, my developer is gone. And I am just a homeowner who's looking out for the interests of my family and my kids. Certainly, we have a long-term vested interest in remaining members of the, the community. And if this isn't the true greater good of our community, certainly I support that. But again, I wanna understand that value. But based on the discussion that I heard this evening with the first two gentlemen that spoke, if I as a homeowner choose to erect a streetlight that is in, well, basically just a streetlight, then I can also be sectioned out of the special assessment district, is that correct?
No, I don't think you should.
So is there a certain square footage where you're able to section yourself out of this assessment district?
I don't think anybody, including Mr. Sullivan, should leave here tonight thinking that we're gonna separate anything from the district. My comment suggested that if there was a large area of undeveloped property that one developer still owned, we could investigate that possibility. But that may not be possible.
Okay, so it, it would need to be undeveloped property, then?
It would, it would need to be developer-owned property that was a larger tract. And even then, I think there would be impediments.
Okay. The next question I have, just based on the last discussion about percentage of protest. The school is a very large square footage of this particular project. And my question to the board is, what percentage of the special assessment district is occupied by the school?
If you give me a minute, I can give you a rough estimate on that, I think. Again, the total assessment area is, is roughly 6.18 million square feet. And in looking for the school property, Dickinson Public Schools, Lot 1, Block 1 of Country Oaks 2nd, is 439,520 square feet.
All right. Not a math whiz, so I'll have to do a little math, but certainly understand that.
A large percent.
So a large percentage of this, this decision is based on the school's decision to protest or not? And then lastly, just kind of based on the precedence that this assessment sets. I purchased my home in Dickinson. I'd never heard of special assessments before when I moved to the community. And one of the major driving factors for my purchase of that home was that it was marketed to me as a residence that was not under special assessments, that the infrastructure development was absorbed by the developer, passed to the builder, and then passed on to me as a homeowner in my mortgage. Again, probably failure and ignorance on my part to understand the process and what was going on in the city at the time. You know, I can see my purchase agreement where that is, special assessments are supposed to have been absorbed by the seller. And I understand that this is a retroactive special assessment. My question is, is when the city council deems that green space, which is also an added benefit to the community, when the city council deems that green space is also an added benefit, am I gonna get tagged with another special assessment here in five, 10 years? To go ahead and put parks in what I consider to be the future gem of the community? I mean, is there anything to protect me from additional special assessments after special assessments after special assessments, outside of this protest process, which at least a, a good portion of is, is owned by the school?
All we can tell you is that at this time, there are no plans for any special assessments. That doesn't mean it couldn't happen in the future with some future commission making a decision about a certain project.
Okay.
But our policy right now on newly developed property is to not use special assessments. Now, some of the property in the Meadow Hills and maybe Country Oaks, but Meadow Hills developments, the earlier ones, did have a small amount. A, a portion, a fraction of that infrastructure was done with special assessments. We, we quit that policy five, six years ago?
2014.
Probably, yeah, I was gonna say two or three.
It was when the zoning ordinance was changed.
Today, we do no special assessments on newly developed properties.
And so just previously developed properties are specially assessed, then?
There were some subdivisions a few years ago that a portion of the infrastructure was done with special assessments.
That answers my questions. I appreciate the commission's time. I just wanted to understand a little bit based on the discussion that was given this evening, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? I, I wanna thank you all for coming. We, we really need this input. Maybe you didn't like all the answers you got, but it is really good to have you here and hear the input that we got tonight. None of us wish we were in this position with this particular project. This area was caught in transition, and we really wish that we weren't doing what we're doing. But this, this is the only way to get it done. So we hope you will see fit to move the project forward. But the most important thing is that it's really good you were here tonight, giving us your input. Okay, let me, let me make sure this is done. So again, thank you. Okay, you, you have a different issue?
You got it correct.
Okay.
Commissioner, Mr. President, my name is Mark Conte, I'm with Meyer Contracting. Tonight, you approved Agenda Item 7B, List Station 14 bid. I understand it's already approved, I just wanna make a comment on that. You approved, based on Apex's recommendation, to use three separate contractors for the bid proposed work. Meyer Contracting was the low bid for the combined contracts. I don't wanna sound sour grapes here, and I won't take up a whole lot of your time, but just, in the future, I would suggest analyzing the cost of three separate contracts as opposed to one contractor for combined contracts. That cost will far exceed the difference in the bid price between the combined contracts and the individual contracts. We're gonna consider that in the future. I say it respectfully, I'm not trying to.
No, that's okay, and I think I hear what you're saying, but you do know North Dakota state law?
No, I'm not familiar with that. That's, that's something I'd love for you to explain to me. I'm not sure, I mean, I'm reading the, reading the big bid tab sheet, and they, you know?
Yeah.
They list combined contract, individual contracts. I'm not sure what the.
In North Dakota, we must take separate bids for the, the major sub, what could be subcontractors.
Understood.
And we must take a combined bid.
Correct.
We must accept the low bid of the two. Am, am I saying that correctly?
Correct, and there is a $2,500 difference between.
Right, I understood. Now, was it specified if the, the combined bid was low, or the individual contracts were low?
If I could, I could cite specifically what the Country Oaks.
Go ahead.
And again, I don't wanna, I, I'm not, I'm not saying you did anything wrong. I'm just, I just wanna suggest that, that in the future, you consider that cost. I understand the law, and what you just described is a law. But there will be, it will cost you more with those three separate as opposed to the combined. For the people of Dickinson, so it is something to consider in the future. And I'm not sure how you do that with a law you have to follow. But it does, it will cost you more in the, in the, in the future.
Yeah. Mr. Conte, if I could just make a comment before Ms. Goss, still with the state law. I think us, capable as staff that would, that have to manage this project would agree that we would, it's an easier process if it's a one-bidder environment. But unfortunately, we do have state law that we have to follow up, and, and it's really hard in the times of bidding. How do we put a cost on a, a single bid contract at, at the time of, of bidding? It's a really difficult number to come up with.
Understood.
And, but you're right, we, we would prefer working with one group rather than three. It's just easier.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I, I don't wanna sound like a sore loser, I just wanna explain that, that my feelings are not across.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Any comments for the commission? Not, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
In a second. We are adjourned.